My husband is going, I was like, oh, I'll be home tonight. And I thought, oh crap, normalize the 20.
All right, welcome to select board meeting. We're going to get ourselves started at 6:34 as per usual with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did they just pull it?
Dave Hemingway, chair of the select board.
Marlo Herrick.
And you don't have these coming in.
Oh, here's his.
Here's the perfect timing.
Sorry, I had to drop some stuff off from my elders.
All right, so we are all here.
Dave, I did not put this on the agenda, and I should have asked Russ to put it on. But you should, we need to organize the board for this year, who's going to be chairman.
Oh, cool, that's not going to be a problem. So when do we want to do that now?
Because Marlo really wants to be the chair.
No?
Now let's fight over it, Marlo.
Yeah, right. See, you know where I fight. Not here.
The thing that I would point out then, based on that comment, is at any point in time, anybody can make a motion to appoint somebody else as the chair. That being said, it is customary that after a new election, we do it. Obviously, no one's changed on the board, but have at it.
Okay, I, I, I vote and support Mr. Hemingway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you don't even get to say anything. So, okay, move on.
Somehow I thought it was going to turn out that way.
Well, we watched me at one and even on Saturday.
Obviously, we went through both elections and town meeting this past week. And those went really well. We had a good amount of discussion at town meeting and a fairly decent turnout, filling most of this hall. Thank you to everybody that came out, and we hope that we continue to get that kind of engagement here. Also note that there are all kinds of boards, committees, commissions that can use your help, whether they need full members or alternates, or just people showing up that have interest. So with that being said, are there any other announcements?
You might want to repeat the announcement about the closure of White Plains Road.
Ah, yes.
It's an exciting announcement, if you ask me.
I'd never drive up there.
Do you have the dates in front of you?
It's April 24th through 29th.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So April 25th through 29th, which should be coincided with April vacation at the school, is going to be the closure for the White Plains Bridge culvert and road. Culverts slash bridge, depending on what you want to call it. That should be closed for that week to allow for the new installation of the upgraded and not falling apart culvert. The, there may or may not be some additional time before and after those dates, where it is one lane, to allow for finishing and or paving.
You're saying that's a school vacation week?
Yes.
What happens if it rains that week?
They'll still do it.
Yeah, they got the water.
Yeah, there's already wetlands and water, and so they're already doing water mitigation and, and tie off. So that's all part of the contract for it.
Well, hold on, I mean granted, you can't control Mother Nature, so if it decides to deluge, which could happen in August and July, which I've seen before, you know what I mean? It could be in the same situation, but part of the pricing was to do it during school vacation, which we saved significant amount of money.
This is the summer?
This is April.
April, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, April.
Yeah, so it saves a significant amount of money.
So I, I, I could see that if there were a particular major storm, that maybe another day or two for delay could be possible. But it, it's not supposed to be, because they're supposed to factor all of that in.
We won't be getting a 100-year storm, will we?
You know, lately, who knows?
You never know this year.
No, I mean, look at California.
So, yes, do we have any other announcements?
We have a notice going into the next grapevine about the closure. It's on the website. I was thinking of sending a notice to everyone in White Plains or up in that neighborhood.
That would be fantastic.
That would be good.
And probably the town of Warner as well.
I think we would need to send that, like, now.
Yes.
Otherwise, they won't get it by the time it's taken.
Why, because mail takes a month?
Sometimes.
I know, I've just heard this stuff.
Usually, it's pretty good inside our town, though, because our mail people are good. But.
Today, we did have the people from ESP here, they're the FAW people. And talking further about what we wanted, they're going to give us. We've already gotten a quote for the downstairs, the offices, and the exterior door, and the interior door, the cafeteria. I've asked them to give us another quote for here. And maybe, I'm hoping we can fit that in and maybe get it done now. Anyway, so that's coming, you know, it's been a slow process, but it's coming along.
Okay, one other announcement, opening up the front page of our website so I could finally get to the notice. The road weight limit postings are now in effect. So, welcome to mud season. If you're over six tons, don't expect to be going down the roads or having really large deliveries, unless that's organized and taken care of. Any other announcements? That's all I have here. Okay, that moves us on to our appointments, then. Starting with John Pearson for temporary occupancy permit renewal request. Come on down.
Good afternoon, folks. Man, well, he don't seem too well.
Come on up there, sure.
Let me read my notes here a little bit. I would, this is, I would like to request an extension on my occupancy permit. There's been several reasons, I really haven't got much, anything done. I've had quite a few problems. Main thing was COVID, price of materials just skyrocketed. That was the start of it. 2021, Tara and I both got in a tire accident. I believe that was in February. In March, I went in, had neck surgery. I just back, went back in three, four weeks ago, had my left shoulder operated on from that tire wreck. Friday, I just went in, had this shoulder operated on from that tire wreck. I have had a little bit of lumber thawed out for the house. I intend to build a house myself. I can't afford to hire nobody. So really, pretty much not anything has been done to that house other than a little bit of dirt work on, trying to do a little landscaping to build up. My son did that last summer. Did some stone wall work to build up the front of the house. Make the, the lane a little more flat where the house is going to go. We've done some of that, a lot of stone work around the front. Other than the landscaping and some of that, that's pretty much the extent that the work has been done. So, for them reasons, physically, I, I haven't been able to do much anything. So for those reasons, I would like to another two-year extension, if, if possible. Hey, that's about what I get to say, really, it's.
Okay. So let's start off, this was for two years, correct?
Right.
And what is the normal length of the temporary occupancy permit?
I would have to check the notes, but I believe it's 90 days is the typical timeframe. But that's usually used for, say, if somebody's camping over the summer, that's why it's about that.
That was, that was for an IV.
Yeah.
Okay. So you also mentioned that you're setting up a new spot for the, the house? So are you not putting it where the existing house was?
It's going to be, we're probably going to end up tearing the old house down.
Well, you would have to if you're building any house. But are you planning on putting it in the same location as the previous house?
Yes.
Okay. As the way you just described it, it sounded like you were preparing a new location for another house.
Well, we're just doing some landscaping around the house. So the lawn's going to be a little more level and flat out there and.
Okay, okay.
But right now, that house is, is storage for a lot of stuff, and, and no place really to put that. So we're, we're trying to, instead of renting a place to put all of our stuff, we don't want to do that for two years and spend that money until we're really ready to, to go.
Okay. So two more questions about what, what's happening, and then everybody can talk about whatever or ask other questions. The first one, since you've mentioned already cutting stuff and preparing to be able to build when you're, you're capable, do we have a filed building permit and stuff so that everything will be ready to go for you as soon as you can?
If I've done, no, you don't need to, to replace a house when it's burnt, do you?
Well, if it's going to be a complete rebuild, you would need a building permit.
And what's, what's a complete rebuild? Is that like a tear down and put back up?
Tear down and then put back up.
Okay. It needs a foundation too. But if, if I might add, the reason that we have the trailer there in the first place is because we've had people going in the, in the barn, and we've got horses there. So we put it there so that Josh could live there and make sure that the horses are okay. No one's going to come in and steal anything or do any kind of, you know.
So, so you guys aren't living in the trailer?
No, Josh is living in the trailer. Yeah.
Keeping the water hooked up to be able to water the animals.
I don't know if you have any more questions?
The other question I was going to ask was, and are you currently living there? Because I believe that's what the first temporary occupancy permit was for, so they could live their well-used building.
Right.
So moving forward, and, yeah, we all, you know, realize and respect that building materials and everything are more than.
Yeah.
They triple or more.
Which I, I do think they're going to start leveling out, we all will, because otherwise.
I think they have leveled out. I don't expect them to go lower.
No, 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 well.
Well, like I said, a lot of us materials, I'm going to be just throwing out on our own mill, and I just can't afford to go buy them.
But as, as a plan for moving forward, if, if we can, you know, get you the exception for another two years, do you have any kind of timeline of what, what you're hoping to succeed to, for the next two years?
Hopefully, this spring, we're going to be able to at least get the cellar hole put in this summer.
So that would require removing the existing structure, then?
Right, it's going to have to get torn down.
Okay.
And dig out, dig out all the basement and put a new zone. Oh, okay.
Just dirt and stone.
I mean, I jacked it up, and I built a, a stone up there, three feet. Dug down by hand, four feet, put a four-foot crosswalk around there by hand when I was 30 years old. Did it all by hand, I jacked that old building up by hand, and, but I was 30 years old, too.
Yeah, age makes a difference for things like that.
So what's the policy say in regards to?
Well, it's up to the select board. If you think there's extenuating circumstances, then you can grant the permit for a longer duration. That's what's in the zoning ordinance.
Which we did.
Because it's usually 90, and then we get it to two years.
90 days, but you can if there are reasons like, for example, a fire, you can grant it.
Okay, gotcha.
If I weren't in the tire wreck, if I didn't have all these medical issues, things probably would have happened, but.
So here's a thought. Based on the fact that we're going to have to go through the building permit process anyway, my suggestion or, or thinking would be that it would make sense to do a 90-day to start with that would then be able to be renewed once we have a completed and ready-to-go building permit. Because then we've got, this is what's going to happen, this is when it's going to happen, how it's going to happen. So there's an actual moving forward, which sounds like it's perfectly exactly what he wants to be able to do. And with the building permit process, that's not requiring any physical work as of yet. So that gets it to that stage of, here's what we're going to do really soon now. And then with that permit process and after he's had a chance to heal a bunch, you can say, yeah, I'm going to get to it this, this point in time, and then you can extend beyond that.
And how long is the building permit good for?
Two years, but I do think there's a requirement for the foundation to be poured within a certain amount of time.
I think it's about a year.
Uh, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, with Septic any, up there in the well anyway, right?
Septic well's all in it, that stuff's all in it.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I would have to double check, but I thought it was within the first year, the foundation had to be done. But I can't find the exact number off the top of my head. 180 days, the foundation has to be poured.
A half a year.
So a half a year to knock it down and have a foundation put in.
Right.
I mean, it's, the hard thing with putting in the foundation and not building on it and have heat in it, I don't know if you know anything about building.
You don't want it to fill and stuff.
You, you don't have, you don't know anything about concrete?
Unfortunately, yes.
And you don't have it heated?
Yeah.
You know what happens to it?
Scraps cracking.
Yeah.
Concrete can crack with heat. As I grew up in the concrete business, so.
And it's good for it to be damp, but.
A $25,000 foundation go totally junk.
But you could also cap it.
Well, you have a. Even capped, it needs to be heated.
You do have to let it sit for a while before you build on it.
Yes.
You got to let it cure.
Yes, but that don't take long to cure.
Couple months.
And then back, then backfill it.
You can't backfill it if it was capped and.
For a delay.
And all this stuff, that's what I'm saying. If it's not heated, and it's not everything else, I mean, that foundation can go totally crack.
Well, hopefully, we'll have some warmer weather.
No, any of that, I mean, it's set over the winter is where our goals jump.
No, yeah, but you won't be putting that in for, for foundation for a couple months, right?
What I'm saying, you get a couple of years to build a house. You, you put your foundation in summer, you got two years to get your house built, but you don't want that foundation setting over winter by itself either.
But wouldn't you cap it before, even if you, before you put the house in?
It needs heat.
It does still need heat.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's like building a house and start putting your, your sheet rock up before you roof it. You don't do that.
Yeah, no, I understand. Well, there's lots of people that pour and then cap their.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Yes, but they're taking a, they're taking a gamble.
Yeah, but you take a gamble anyways.
The only question I have by doing this 90-day thing is, does this revert everything back to 90 days that trailer's going to leave?
Well, apparently, it would be that at the end of the two-year period, it would have to leave unless we renew.
I understand that, but you want to change that right now to 90 days.
Well, there's no changing. It's, are we going to grant anything additional?
Until we do the building permit. If I understood you right.
Okay, yeah.
Well, if something flies up, the building pit permit does not get granted immediately till the 90 days is up, is the trailer going to go? You know what I'm trying to say?
So, so, okay, to, to answer your question, technically, yes, unless there's another renewal. And we could look at doing another renewal. So for example, if you're in the building permit process and there's an issue or there's a hangup with a plan or there's back and forth with the, with the planning board, et cetera, we can certainly go, well, they're in the process, we'll extend it while they're going through the process. And that's, that's pretty easy to look at.
Because my, my problem with this, is you're looking at this 90 days as a, as an IV policy. This is not an IV.
I think we're looking at an extension of 90 days to then, you know, you bring in what you're going to, you know, what you're going to build and get the permit started. I, I think, I think just like, you know, you point out a lot, John, that we need to follow and, and the guidelines that were given and, and try to be as fair as possible, which we, of course, we want to do for sure, you know, for any town resident, you know? And I think what we're just trying to do is, you, you, as you always point out, you never want to set a precedence to the, you know, you know, because everybody, listen. Wait, no, but hold on, let me just finish. Hardship, hardship, hardship can happen in so many different ways. And so, you know, I, I think all Dave's trying to do, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is just, you know, the two years is, is up, let's, let's set some guidelines.
I'm asking for law.
Yeah, some guidelines, just so that, so that in the future, let's say, this comes before our board again, at least we can say, well, we, you know, there was some hardship, they went and they, they, they got the building permit, then they, you know, you have to cut, and it, it sounds not good, I don't even like saying it because I'm not really that, I'm not a total believer in that. But you come back to the board so that we say, okay, they're moving and making some progress. Correct me if I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth at any, any point in time. And so you're making some progress now, okay. All right, now, now we're going to see where the progress is at, and then we'll, we'll move on to the next.
I appreciate that, I do.
And just trying to be fair to you and the towns and the rules and the regs, that's all.
But I think you need to call this a 90-day extension and not a IV policy.
No, they're both the same thing under the ordinance.
I think it's a little different.
Maybe it's just a temporary occupancy permit for any particular reason.
Yep, and I appreciate what you're saying, I really do.
My question is, I'm sorry, we, because we need someone to be living there while we're building too, to take care of the animals and make sure nobody steals building materials, tools, et cetera. So that, that's another thing.
So one of the things that is, and Russ, please correct me if I'm not remembering, or Marlo, please correct me if I'm not remembering this correctly from when I was planning board. But the way that this is all phrased in the ordinances is that it is not designed to allow for an additional structure and so on.
The goal is so that you don't end up in somewhere that has two houses or three.
Right, the trailer, it was set up originally, either we're going to restore what we got or replace it.
Right.
And the trailer's gone.
So I want to go back to one of the things that you just said with, while there are certainly ways that you can get around it, they're not ideal. For example, with the, the concrete. And so, having done a bunch of concrete recently, unfortunately, I, or I should say last year, I completely recognize and understand that you wouldn't want to pour concrete until sometime now or, or soon. Not, certainly not like right before winter. And so the timeline of a 90-day and then 180-days kind of puts you at that, like, it's fall-winter timeline. And so I can understand that not being ideal. But based on the number of days, would it make sense to do 180-day extension? So double the normal, which gives us the half year, so we get to fall, that can only, will only be extended if there is a active building permit? Because then it would be saying that come this time in the next year, that would be when you would have to be starting to do foundational floors.
Yep, I get what you're saying.
Because that, that seems like it would put the timeline in a manner that addresses the, the issues that you had with the concrete, but also addresses the issue of just kind of continually extending when we don't have solid progress to, to use as justification for that. How does that sound? Or am I missing something else?
No, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to be fair for you folks as well as my side. And I really appreciate what you, what you're doing now, I really do. And I'm happy with what you're saying. And I, I guess I'm happy with that. I mean, my ideal thing is to have the foundation in with a total frame on it, with a, with a solid roof on it, so.
Well, you're more than welcome to go through the process much quicker than that.
That's my totally goal, but then it's the dollars.
Right.
I mean, I'm.
And the body.
So that way, it gives you the flexibility of that.
I'm retired and picking up pipeline jobs here and there. And so my finances are pretty thin. I don't want to go out and get a $200,000 mortgage again. But, you know, you get to what you got to do, and go from there and.
What is the, is there any other comments or questions for them from the board?
No, I, I see how hard it is, I'm.
No, we respect that.
But you got to have, you got to have certain things, because you don't want everybody to tell you, you know?
I accept that, and I appreciate that, and I know you guys got to have a draw the line, and I understand. And I really appreciate what you're saying here, I do.
Are there other questions that we should be asking or other things that are mentioned in the ordinance that I probably have forgotten about?
No, I think you've pretty much covered everything.
Okay.
I think that's pretty good. I mean, there might be other things in the ordinance that I could double check later, but I don't think so off the top of my head. It really does get this one toward the discretion to make a decision when it's needed, so.
And just to let you know, quite frankly, they want to build a bridge.
What was that?
They want to build a bridge house. Who wants to build a bridge?
Oh, that'd be, that's what you have up there now.
It'd be really cool to see, to see it back again.
It'd be nice to see it back. I mean, it'd probably be a little bit different, but.
The place is probably going to totally end up with my boy anyway, so it's going to be his set someday down the road, so, but he decides to do it, it's going to be his choice.
He says he wants it.
I wish we still had a covered bridge in Webster that over a river. Like at my house.
We tried really hard to get that for clothespin.
We were hoping that clothespin bridge could have had a bridge over it, you know?
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
If I, if I had won, if I win a lot of money in the next.
Tell me about it.
Because a lot of us wanted the covered bridge there, but.
Oh, yeah.
Would have been beautiful, but.
Well, I'm, I'm happy with what you've decided if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, no, I know, we're here to work with you.
No more tricks, breaking arms and stuff.
Well, I wasn't happy with that, and.
That was a, a flatbed wrecker who ran a stop sign in front of us.
Oh, my God!
He was going about 50, yeah.
And even though there was a witness and everything else, they could not do nothing with it because the cop didn't see it personally.
They have, the cop has to see him actually go through the stop sign.
And the guy, the guy even admitted he did it.
You're kidding?
No.
That's crazy. No, they're not, because we've had that happen twice. It's kind of sad, but it's life, unfortunately.
So if you're going to extend it, I would need a vote.
Yeah, so.
You put it in your lovely terms.
I knew that we extend the temporary occupancy permit for 180 days to be renewed with the successful application of a building permit for the replacement.
Second? Or you want second?
No, you got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you don't mind.
So thank you, sorry that it's been so hard to get going through it, but we understand, so.
It's called like.
Things happen, yeah, right, things happen.
Russell had called to remind us of the, of the meeting time. And we've never done these before, John, I'm going to put an abatement in on, the assessor came and.
That will just get filed through the office.
Okay.
Well, it's too past the deadline.
Yeah, it's past the deadline, which we didn't know. Yeah, I've never, I never did one of these before, so I didn't.
Discussed this earlier with Russell, he said he was going to pass that on to you, that I was going to mention that.
This is the first time I've talked about it.
I just got it.
This is over a month ago.
Right, yes, so did you have to have the paperwork in for?
Yeah.
All right, well, the biggest thing is they get an appraisal of 2020. All right, well, the biggest thing is, they get an appraisal of a two thousand twenty-three trailer, and it's a nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, so it, it added a value of forty thousand dollars to his property, and we just paid four thousand dollars for it, so, but like Russell said, we can put.
Well, I can mention it to the assessors and have them go out and take a look at it this year.
'Cause we've got the, you know, I've got the bill of sale and everything, all the, all the stats on it.
So if you wanna get any copies of that, I will forward it over to the assessors.
And how they could appraise it in a brand-new trailer.
Probably just that there's a new trailer sitting there.
What was that?
I'm just saying, it's a lot easier to correct if it's got misinformation.
Right.
Rather than a, a market-type question, yeah.
Yeah, is it, they won't care how much you paid for it, they'll just assess it at what they think isn't appropriate value.
Thirty years old, you know, yeah, well, look what houses are going for now, boy, the prices are.
But, yeah, he, he can get all of that through the assessors.
It's a two, it's a four thousand.
I've got it all here.
Now sell it tomorrow.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
And then I can make a copy of it, and then I'll call you when it's bad, if you wanna.
Okay, 'cause, well, I made copies.
Oh, okay, you got a copy that I can just take?
I have my handy little printer at home.
I will forward it on to the assessors and I'll let them know what's going on, and maybe we can get it fixed for this tax year.
Okay, so, we'll figure it out, thanks, guys.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations, you're staying as, you're staying as the chairman.
Yeah, apparently.
I don't blame you.
It's like present to life.
I would have done the same thing.
All right, that moves us on to our second point, which I'm sure I would bet your last name, so please say it.
Yeah, Charlie.
I would've definitely butchered that.
Another red socks fan?
Say it again.
Absolutely.
Petrucelli, which, his is Petrus.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'm here about, uh, unregistered vehicles on my neighbor's lawn.
Right here, do you want me to pass this down?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
And I have.
Thank you.
I, I have pictures on my phone and on my computer, I can show you, um, but there's, best by count, there's like twelve unregistered vehicles, it's, and it's, uh, if you look on the next page, where it's located is in the middle of a town aquifer, the one that's on, before you get to Concord, down on Deer Meadow, there's a big aquifer there, so my house, his house, his neighbor's house, we all sit on this aquifer, and he's got, I'd say twelve, um, I know two of them haven't moved since July two thousand eighteen, because that's when I moved into the house, and that's, they haven't moved to where they were located then, um, and I just, I was, I came in, I talked to him, and he said I had to come talk to you, so, what is the next step I would like to, I'm concerned, besides the, it doesn't look good, um, I'm more concerned with the water.
Well, that's important, 'cause we mess it up, it's hard to clean out.
The hydrologist will tell you, you know, you, you get, uh, um.
Oil?
The, the water unpolluted when it's, an aquifer unpolluted, don't pollute.
That's true, 'cause I have, my house sits on the aquifer too.
Around the.
That one?
Semi-circle, I think.
Or a, a different one or that one?
Well, he's just pulling it up.
Yeah, I was just trying to pull up the, the location.
You have pictures, I mean, I, I, I mean, I just.
Just so that I can actually put it in my.
Film, 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 film our eyes myself, no, film our eyes myself.
You, you don't have an email address to send things to?
Uh, you can just send anything to town admin or, or Russell.
Right, and then we'll forward it to that page.
To us, but, um.
I used to design it, because, yeah, you're probably missing that.
Oh, well, anytime you wanna come down, help us out.
Back to the darkness, back to the nineties, I mean.
Our webpage and the platform that provides it to the majority of towns in New Hampshire is definitely lacking.
Yeah, but it's, um, they were internal webpages for IBM, just the facts, um, so, I, you know, that's a concern a lot, I mean, you just, well, save you the speech, it's just, it's not a good idea to do that, um, and so, I'm not sure, there, I guess there's no zoning. Well, there are zoning things. There, there's zoning, I mean, it's a five-acre zone. Well, there's the junkyard law one, and then we also have a groundwater protection ordinance, which I am not the most familiar with, 'cause we don't use it very often, but I can get very familiar with it, but I think what would be poignant is to get the permission to send Tom out, take a look, take some pictures, and then get a report and bring it back to the board.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good idea.
And he can access the back through my yard, two twenty-three, he doesn't have to go onto that guy's property. 'Cause he can't, he has to be able to see it from, can't step on their property without their permission, so. Right, so, I mean, he can walk around back, you know, I, I've got pictures I could send there, um, I could show you, I could, got my computer, but, um, well, that, that's, that's it, it's been, it's only been, you know, like, they seem to be procreating over the three, four years I've been there.
They're like having all the little cars?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, there are actually some smaller ones, some bigger ones.
I was, I was, sorry.
If it's the place I'm thinking of, he's doing some work up front, like he's always getting something going up front.
Yeah, so I think what, what Russ said, we'll send, I'll get some pictures, and that way, you know, it's not, just taking your word, not that we wouldn't wanna do that, you know, um, right, and so.
Well, this guy works for the town too, so.
That's right, that's why I meant, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's sort of an impartial judge, right?
Right, that's right.
Send out, go take a look, take a seat when he sees, and then report back.
But you're right, we have to save the aquifer, so, you know, that's, that's the bottom line too.
My, my acreage is glacial sand, so, you know, which is poor, so if, you're, you're dropping brake fluid or something, it's going, it's, it's highly permeable, it's going straight down, I don't know how, how deep, how far down the aquifer is, you know, um, I don't know, I didn't have my well drilled in there, and that's all been, was in place, um, but I know there's wetlands behind my neighbor's property on the other side of him, part of her property is wetlands, it's, it's the stuff that the, um, solar company's gonna.
Oh, yeah, use.
You know, it's over, that's her, her wet lens extends into their property, um, and so there, I don't think it's very deep, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not a hydrologist, I haven't drilled a, but it's like, once that aquifer's blown, that whole neighborhood has no water.
Yeah.
So I would ask you to send any and all of the photos and other documents that you have to.
Town admin?
To, uh, either, yeah, town administrator, and then, it sounds like the board is in favor of sending Tom out to go take a look, so they'll schedule that, Tom will probably be in touch with you, so he can use your property to look, uh, from the back.
Yep.
And then we can get a report with all of it, uh, and then from there, see what is gonna be the most appropriate thing for us to do.
Right.
Well, the. Everything, everything you do has to have background, you know?
Well, I can understand you gotta get all your ducks in the row, but isn't the final action, remove this stuff so many days, or we're gonna remove it, put a lien on your property?
Uh, it wouldn't be a lien, uh, but there, there are certain processes that, once they've gone through, maybe submit for a junkyard permit, maybe remove all of the stuff, maybe go get registrations for your vehicles, like, there's a whole number of different ways that it can be handled by the property owner.
How can you have a junkyard permit in a five-acre residential zone? You would have to go get a variance for it. Pardon? You would have to get a variance for it, so we'd have to go before the ZBA to ask. So, we could take two years, I have to go to, when they go to the zoning board, I'd have to go to the zoning board and say, no friggin' way? It wouldn't take two years, um.
I mean, we should know by next month if Tom, from whatever Tom's thing is.
You'll probably know by the next select board meeting.
Probably.
I mean, he's grandfathered in the one-acre lot, and I think it's actually his mother owns it, the one-acre lot, and, um, the house and whatever he's got on it. Well, if his mother owns it, he can't have any form of variance like that, his mother would have to apply for it, he wouldn't be able to get it, 'cause he wasn't the property owner.
Thank you for bringing it into our attention, officer.
Absolutely.
Can't be everywhere once, we can't.
I'm getting ulcers over it, I really, I mean, it's, I look, I think, just, I'm just waiting for the day, you know, when my water's no good. Right, well, we have to follow the correct process, or the whole thing could be thrown out, so. 'Cause, I mean, if, if he was a regulated business, and they were being inspected, and he, and he had impervious surface to put all these vehicles on, that'd be one thing, you know, he was following all the EPA and contriv, you know, lots of those guys who have licensed businesses have to follow, so, okay, but he's just. Ever called NHDES? Pardon? Did you ever call DES, Department of Environmental Services?
Have you ever called them?
Yeah. The state? The state. No, I called, I was told then to call town police, and they called DES, 'cause it was a couple of years ago. We can call the DES too, so that's, once we get the report, and if we see it, we can also inform New Hampshire DES, if the board would like me to, that there's an issue.
But you have a right to.
And I'll put a little weight on it, too.
Yeah, you can call them directly, even before any of this is done.
If you wanna call them tomorrow, you can.
Get them going.
And I, I think our police chief here has a card for you for that.
Send everything to me, send me, send me a copy also.
Yeah, so CC him and all the stuff you send to Tom.
I, 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 the sergeant, I called, talked to him a couple of years ago, before, uh, and he said, okay, he'd send it in, but, you know, it's encoverte.
Yeah, and who knows, who knows if they didn't do it and.
Whatever it is, yesed, um, but send it to me, and we'll help you follow up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and you're gonna talk about the new zone, the junkyards? Yeah, that's why I scheduled that right after you. Well, sir, I've, I've been rea, I've, I've been reading the grapevine, and it sounds like you're going to allow junkyards? No, it's the opposite.
So, sort of.
Well, hold on, I wouldn't say that, did they have to?
It's already not a legal process. Yeah, yeah, there's all this hardened commercial stuff along the Meramec, you know, where they used to have factories and it's already despoiled, you wanna junkyard, lease some of it.
So, let's go ahead and move on to that old business, which is the junkyard ordinance, uh, the short version of the junkyard ordinance that was put forth from the planning board and suggested was basically matching the state statutes and what they already have and/or require, the major reason for having one, uh, is so that we can recoup court costs and legal fees, should there be a future court case, uh, around a junkyard, uh, as there was a recent court case, I don't have it, maybe Russ does.
Town of Lincoln versus Shennard in two thousand twenty-one, I think, is the case.
That made it so that they, now, unless you have passed your own version of that ordinance, you're unlikely to get legal fees reimbursed for the town, uh, and we took the straw poll at the end of town meeting, and most of the audience raised their hand saying, yes, they wanted us to move forward with this process, uh, I don't think I saw any against.
I didn't see any.
Well, I think everybody, I think everybody's got the same concerns, it's just, we wanna make sure that people, like.
And the key is that we're not adding, we're not making anything more onerous than the state already has there, um, and so, the next part of this process would be to schedule a public hearing to talk about that, and then make a decision as a board, uh, is the board in favor of scheduling that public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, can we do that for our next board meeting?
I don't, I think it's a little too soon, I think we'd have to do it in the second one of the month.
What was that?
I don't, I think it's a little too soon.
Yeah, I think it's important to give people proper time.
I was thinking we were at the beginning of the, the month for some reason.
Well, good, you're confused, what month, time of month it is.
We just finished our town meeting, it's just the start of it.
I know. Oh, he's got a.
So, yes.
Well, the state laws, now, are there, in addition to get a permitted junkyard, are there, like, impermeable surface requirements?
Yes, there are various requirements alongside being a junkyard, so.
Like you can't be on top of an aquifer?
I, I haven't, there's details of what they are, but I know there are several things that exist, uh, there aren't many things that they would go inspect, and they would do so yearly based on it being an actual registered, uh, and certified junkyard, right?
And you gotta pay taxes and licensing fees and all that other stuff.
Um, so that would be the state process for it, um, and so that's where we are, okay, so it wouldn't be the next one, uh, so the second one of next month, then?
People, seventeen.
Seventeenth is definitely doable.
Does that sound good to the board?
I'll be.
So, let's go ahead and do that, and, uh, then we can hear from more people then.
Right, bring all your friends to that meeting.
Well, you know, you did, Webster did go to court on the junkyard on Gammell's.
Oh.
Yeah, you should read up on that.
Well, yeah, he claimed he was, they, they decided it was a farm, and I think now with the rats and everything, he, and he's, he's not living there, he's in Texas.
Really?
Yeah, I'll simply say there's lots of really interesting things about that, and the court case and what happened afterwards, and the various other complaints.
Well, there's the other one on poverty, plain road.
Yeah, 'cause that's where he moved out of, and.
Yeah, some of that lien too, yeah.
Yeah.
But, this is not about people, it's about the way that it gets handled.
See, that's why he's chair. People, who are you?
There's two, I mean, yeah, it's like if you're coming into town from Concha Cook, you get to go past that, you're coming into town from Concord, you get to go past my neighbor, you know?
Well, we're working, we'll work on that and see what happens.
Sounds good, all right, so that moves us on to new business.
Thank you for coming.
Which I don't have any label, do we have new business?
Hope my house doesn't get burned down.
We do not have any new business.
I'd say we had enough business last week.
Uh, so that moves us on to correspondence, yes, there's one that I know I wanted to mention, if you don't have it planned already.
This is the, uh, Durgan case.
Oh, that, that wasn't what I wanted to.
Oh, all right, well, I'll start with the Durgan case, um, that was the house that you sold at eighteen.
Cause I'm sure we can't have this in a five-acre residential.
Whatever it is, terrace, Mora and terrace.
Yeah.
Um, and you, you realize more than what's going through the town.
If, if you don't, if you, if you guys don't, if you don't mind, just because, so that other people can hear, I don't think they can hear over that, so thank you.
Makes things up very well.
Yeah, but sorry, I just.
Sorry.
Um, so anyhow, um, this, we had to cut a check to the, um, Meramec Superior Court, and I think it was almost a year ago we did this, and the check that we cut was forty-one thousand something, and apparently the court hasn't had any better luck than we have in finding Mr. Durgan, um, so they have made the decision of giving us back, um, thirty-one thousand nine seventy-two seventy-three, they are giving the Pillsbury Lake Village District twenty-two seventy-six ten, because there was a water lien on the house, and they appealed to the court for that, uh, sixty-six twenty-one thirty-four, payable to the town's attorneys for reasonable costs and attorney's fees, which also comes to us, 'cause we've already paid those, um, and, and I'm not sure where this money comes from, fourteen dollars and six cents for interest, um, that we didn't pay them, so, I guess it comes from you or another pocket, but, um.
Well, it says for interest earned in the escrow fund, so it must've been in an interest-bearing account.
Oh, all right, good point, all right, at any rate.
Why don't I pick that counter?
So, I'm not sure how soon we're going to see that money, I'm hoping we'll see it pretty soon, uh, so, we're looking at, um, the thirty-one nine seventy-two plus sixty-six twenty-one.
And fourteen.
And fourteen oh six, yes, let's not forget that.
No, that's true.
Awesome.
I like that news.
Yes, really.
Yeah, that's very good news.
Which will be good.
When, when the town does get this money, does it go into a certain fund?
It goes into, well, it would go into the general fund.
Yeah, it's, it's revenue under the, uh, would it go into sold properties or?
It would be proceeds from sale of town property.
Okay, yeah. Do you have other?
I have, um, you know, I have two other things, um, the representatives for the town, uh, have been very helpful, um, and they've kinda worked together, because we had sent three, four identical letters, I heard from everyone except for Representative C., and I know he's been talking with, um, the other representatives, so I'm not surprised I didn't hear from, but I was quite impressed, um, with what. so I'm not surprised I didn't hear from, but I was quite impressed, um, with what happened. Rep, uh, Representative, Representative Elward, um, kind of took the lead on this, and has done a lot of research. Uh, she asked me if Kim could call her, and I told Kim that, and I don't think she has. Um, so I've got a letter from, you know, she's checked with the city of Concord, she's also, uh, looked into the old laws and so forth. And this letter that I think I gave you a copy came the other day, um, regarding that she has gone as far as she can go right now, um, and has explained a little bit of what she's done. So, I have talked to Kim the other day and told her she should call her and, and talk to her about it.
That's an awesome, awesome option.
And, you know, Kim, um, was concerned about, um, making sure Mrs. Andrews knows, but she does know, because I've already talked to Mrs. Andrews about it. So, that's kind of where we are.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm. So, I was quite supr-, I was quite inter-, um, impressed by the.
Well, it's nice to know that they, they, they're actually paying attention, yeah, that's what I was saying. Great, we don't have people call you back that quick on anything else we do.
And at some point, sometime, I think maybe we should invite the representatives to come talk to you, just to.
That would be a good, just to meet them, yeah, that would be awesome.
To do that.
Yes.
The other item I have is more, uh, abatements for campers, and these are small amounts. Um, five dollars, three dollars, thirty-four dollars, five dollars, three dollars, it would cost, I mean, first of all, name mine, I won't go.
Yeah.
We all know, you won't go, we know.
Yeah.
Yep, it's the campground thing.
Yep.
Right, here it is, oh, again, wouldn't realize it until you said, here, what are you doing, you want a pen?
Found it.
Okay.
It's not the big heavy ones, so.
Where's the photo?
So, harder to find.
You mean, you're bored with us already?
Yeah.
Everybody else is gonna, you'll be done in a minute.
You don't have any wonderful things to tell us?
All right, can I touch a pen?
Not today, everything's going to.
Everything's not in, under control, yeah.
Everything's under control.
Thank you, great job, sir.
Well, before, before you go, is that all of our correspondence?
Yes, it is.
It's now time for public comment.
Public comment, um, I thought town meeting went excellent.
Excellent.
Really smooth, I talked to a lot of people as they were leaving, and they said they were happy with everything that happened. Um, I didn't hear anybody gripe or complain, so I think it, everything went real smooth.
And I went to the, the dinner that night, and that was very good, yeah, it was really good, and a lot of people there.
Good, oh, my god, that's great.
It was a good turnout.
Yeah, it was very good.
And there were a few posts online that I saw about it too, that even posted during the meeting, and, and a whole bunch of people thanking Mike, our, our moderator.
Yes, it's a fantastic job.
Making sure that, uh, everybody always felt, even if they had differing opinions, that they were heard.
Welcome to herpes.
And, uh, I, I think that's something that we've all tried to make sure happens now, and, and he has facilitated extremely well for us.
He does a good job.
Even a competent moderator gave us thumbs up.
All right, wow.
That's impressive.
That's right, that's right, I heard that, yeah.
Really?
Was there an article?
A little one, yeah.
But, you know, you gotta admit, we make the paper a little bit.
Or is it just a little bit?
That's right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, have a good one.
Good night.
All right, that brings us to motions and approvals.
Um, we have draft minutes for the March sixth meeting and the non-public minutes from March sixth.
So, I, yeah, well, no.
Are you amending my?
I, 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 I don't care, sorry, write this down, um. Hmm, down on line thirty-three, I, I just want to clarify, I, you know, I don't, to what my point was with the, you know, the good price and the change orders. I didn't, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that I don't believe there should be any change orders, except that sometimes you don't know what's underneath, um, the surface, because we didn't do a bunch of boring and test pits. Um, but by no circumstance do I want to see any, nor would I think we should.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was because it left room for change orders, I think it was, the low price is good in case we have to.
Yeah, yes.
So, we're changing it to, in case we have to do change orders.
Yes, that's true.
In hopes that we don't.
That's the first time you've ever amended my minutes.
I do read them, see?
That's good.
Wow, she's learning a lot, you know? Not for a new member.
Get rid of her.
You stuck with her for another couple of years. All right, uh, do you want to make a motion on it? Do you want to talk about the, uh, non-public ones as well? Actually, no, because we commended this one, so do you want to make a motion on this one?
Okay, so, this is where I love my, find my words, I make a motion to accept the amended minutes, um, of March sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that then brings us to the non-public minutes for March sixth. And... I don't believe there, well, we would have had to have sealed it then anyway, I was gonna say, I don't believe there's any reason to seal it, but, um... Any comments, changes, needs for clarification?
That's good to me.
All right, I approve that we accept the non-public minutes for March sixth as written.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I pick one.
Pick whoever you feel like, who, who's easier to type, D is before M.
All right, do we have any motions or just sign?
There are no motions, um, at your next meeting, just so you know, I'll be bringing for, um, the motions for the first quarter. Um, I do have a question that was, um, has come up. Michelle had some, um, vacation time coming, and it was charged to the police secretary administrative line. And it brought to my attention that we had a trust fund for uncompensated absences, and should have come out of there. Uh, so I guess, I mean, if there was a trust fund set up for that reason, um, however, I think that it would still show up in the, in the expense for the salary, because gross budgeting, you have to show what you actually spent. And my feeling is that the hope was to take it out of the trust fund and reverse the, um, charge in the expense account, and I don't believe you can do that, so, I, but I can, we, I, we can request the money and have it go back into the bank account.
Go back to the general fund, basically, as a reimbursement, that makes sense to me.
So, I mean, I, if you'd like me to do that, I'll, I'll put that for next week in your, uh, those motions.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, I was asked if, that was for you, um, if you wanted to be paid, Dave, I think, did his.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mind, what do I have to do?
Oh, um.
I will claim it.
Milo, could you do one?
No, because I thought we weren't supposed to.
Um, I guess. If you take, for any of the time that you're here, are you supposed to?
Well, because, because when they were handing them out, they said, oh, no, you don't need one, and I said, okay, I'm afraid, I'm not doing this for the money.
We're here the whole time.
Well, I don't think you're, I don't think you're gonna, you know, improve your life, but if you would like to do it, just fill it out and we'll take care of it.
So, what, so what, please, your fancy pen here?
Would be a pen.
See, see, there's gonna light, can't figure out how to use it, open the thing for me, would you?
Then I have a payroll, uh, manifest.
Yeah, it, it's complicated because it's doctors without lawyers.
Oh, I gotcha, okay, so, I don't know when we were here till.
You can just click on the, uh, probably at least an hour after.
Eight o'clock.
Seven to eight, yeah.
We know this.
And what day was it?
March fourteenth.
Ah, someday, isn't that awful?
Take your husband out for lunch. Oh, the first time I, because, oh, that's a long story, we work together, so the paycheck's one, whatever, and I said, oh, oh, there's a bag, I might need to cash my check. I might have did it like eight times, and I thought I was gonna have to walk, but that's okay.
Um, I also have the manifest and an ARPA manifest.
We could all, oh, school payment, three hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three bucks and seventy-nine cents.
Which I would like to just tell you that the cash flow has me a little concerned, we're down to six hundred ten thousand as of today. Um, we still have, before we have taxes, two months of three hundred and sixty-two thousand school payments, which we'll take care of that.
Oh, wow.
Plus some, um, I'm hoping for, um, obviously the town clerk revenue's been down because of all this that's happened, but that should, um, straighten it out, so I'm hoping we can squeak by without having to take a short-term vote. For a short-term line.
Well, all our reimbursements should help that, uh, if we get from the property, that will help that.
Yeah.
Um, we were advert-, we were gonna put up for the, a butter bid, the Pillsbury Lake and one other.
Yeah, and that will be the.
Not that that's much.
Pillsbury Lake one will be next, your next meeting, um, that went out to the two of butters, I actually have a bid on that. The other one, uh, on, um, Guywood Hill Road, I put to the seventeenth, because I wanted, do you have a chance to put it in the regular?
Thank, yes, because I, yeah.
Do you have the backup to these?
Um, yes, would you like to?
I do, I, I, I hate signing something I can't see.
Well, we try to keep it secret from.
Well, I don't know, I know, I'm just, that's just, that's the way I, that's the way I'm holding it.
No, it's a good way to be.
Even at work, I just look at it, and I'm not gonna change it, sometimes they catch things, but.
It's a good way to be, and that's why I brought it up.
What's, uh, uh, I'm confused on this one.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember us doing anything for a police department equipment move out of our, uh, funds.
That was because they moved equipment to put the floor in.
And the ARPA paid for the floor.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I can change it to some, to the general fund, but.
What was the Brisbane?
That's for Accufund, it's the consultant for Accufund.
Thank you.
It's highway robbery, by the way.
That is a cheap lawyer bill.
We'll just hang on.
I wish people could see it.
Cheap lawyer bill.
Well, they can if they come in and ask.
I know, but you know what I mean, I'm like, anytime I open mine, this, it's only an hour.
He does give us a very good rate.
Mm-hmm, very.
How large is our legal budget in the actual budget? Was it five?
I think it's ten.
Ten, okay. I see, because that's a pretty decent chunk, and I know there was at least some that would have gone through the planning board, we, like, leave for the ordinance checking and so on, um, so I was wondering, you know, to help out for that cash flow, if it had made sense to bring any from the, the expendable trust, I think it's expendable trust, but, but probably not if we're not close to our limit yet.
Yeah, I think, but probably toward the end of the year, we might need to think about that. Or it might be wise to think about that, I should put it that way.
Our, uh, our money for the road agent has to go down since we haven't had that much snow and everything for.
Well, we just had, um.
Yeah, there's been no work for him.
Yeah.
The, this is, this one was an expensive one because of the storm.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we only had like really one storm, it's.
And, and really, I mean, from what I used to see.
I think we've done a, I think we've had one, see, see how you kind of forget, I, I think there's been a couple.
Well, maybe a icy, but not a really big deal.
Well, no, what, what, can you imagine a good old winter?
Yeah, right, exactly.
I mean.
I mean, we've, actually, I think we've done okay money-wise on that.
Yeah, I think that saved us a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
I have to say, there's like two dozen ducks on the, on, by Close Prince Bridge, floating around, they look so cute, little.
Really?
Yeah, they're really neat.
They just wait for the new bridge.
And the, the good news is that, like, almost all of the fleece and flower farm stuff, that's gonna be coming back from the various funds, because that's gonna be your roads and your winter maintenance and stuff, and most of that is gonna come out of our funds, so these things will help give us cash flow back, which is also a good reason why we want to keep our unassigned fund up enough, which is why we didn't go overboard in giving it back this last year. So, I really hope that, uh, our bridge stuff is finalized enough, so we can, uh, put on the warrant next year that we're gonna give back most of bridging culverts.
Well, isn't, I know, I mean, we, that was.
Though unfortunately, there may also have to be a, and we're gonna put a bunch of that into the, uh, transfer station for the DES PFAS stuff, but hopefully not.
But still, it's not, if we have the extra money, it won't be coming out of new taxes, so that's one thing.
So, we'll see, I, I hope we can get, get a bunch of that back.
So, I guess, I just would like to say that, um, Mary Welch will be opening for business on March twenty-ninth, as she's mentioned at town meeting, she, she'll be working two days a week, uh, Monday and Wednesday. She'll be open from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty in the morning, and from four-thirty to eight-thirty in the evening on both days.
Um, do we need to adjust the, do we need to do anything to adjust the sign that's hanging down by the door?
Yes, yes.
Is that just stick-on stuff, or do we need to actually get something replaced?
So, the bottom is stick-on stuff, but the rest of it, I think, is actually printed on the sign, so we're gonna have to figure that out.
Yeah, I was gonna look at it today, and I didn't.
So, she's not gonna do one day at the end of the month or whatever?
No.
Because she's doing night times all the time.
Okay, yeah, she's doing two nights and two days.
So, I think she's giving people a, a good opportunity, that people that work during the day can get in.
Come at night, and if someone, yeah.
Um, she's really put a lot of time into, into the learning about it, and I think that she has come up to speed pretty quickly, she got through this election.
Yeah, she did a great job.
And, you know, there's been a few bumps, but when don't you have those?
Yeah.
So, I think she's really done quite well.
Yep.
Our town meeting really went well, I mean, we have moderators great, and all the people that work there are just, you know, great, so.
I would like to, when the meeting is, I would like to ask for a quick, um, non-public under personnel.
Okay, um, do we have anything else to cover in our normal session?
Not for me, no.
All right.
Geez, Dave, look out.
Well, in that case, uh, I approve that we enter into non-public for personnel.
I second that.
Seven forty-two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For anybody else, we will immediately adjourn following the non-public, so there will not be a resumption of the stream or recording.
Milo, zero, can I have that cut back?
Oh, yeah, well, I was trying to keep that for my potato chips.
I, I mean, I had that since.